All right, well, thank you, everyone, for coming to the meeting this evening. Our agenda has been posted and stuff, so everything's ready to go. Is there any agenda additions or deletions? Anybody have anything? All right. At this point, then, I would ask for approval of the regular meeting minutes of September 28th.
Move your approval, subject to any corrections?
On second thought, is there any corrections?
That's not too bad.
Anything down that end, Rick?
I didn't see anything.
All right. All those in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Just an update. We just finished gravel on all the shoulders, on all the new pavement that was put in place. Finished it the other day. Borderline Hill, that grant project, we actually completed it today. So it's 100% complete.
Wow.
So now we gotta get Sedo with Heidi and do all the paperwork for the grants and stuff. Compile everything. She's got, as we were doing the project, we basically listed off the grant stuff, so we, she's got it all itemized, and we need to just go over it and submit it. And the first grant was completion date had to be October 15th. So we're actually right on target. The second grant was completion date on that, Better Roads Grant, was June 30th, I believe it was. So we're headed on that. This project was a high priority because of the slope and grade, and with our scoring through our Better Roads, through the Planning Commission that did all the scoring stuff, that project had to be completed by 2025. So we're...
So we're ahead on schedule.
Now and there.
Is there gonna be anyone painting lines on roads soon?
We reached out. Katie can fill in on that.
Middle Road and that little section of Walker Mountain Road will be done by the state, because they're considered state aid roads. And then we have to figure out Alphresha and Molnab. So we have to reach out to a contractor.
That's in the works, then?
That's in the works. For our salt goals, we got the bids in for the salts, and it's my opinion, because of the service and stuff, and the pricing was right there, darn close, is continued with Appalachian salt. And the other thing is, it's all local drawn by Corcella.
So when you call it in, Corcella is the one who brings it down?
90% of the time, yes. Corcella brings it. Once while you have father and son on New York, they'll bring it up early, early in the morning, but anytime I call for salt, I try to give them lead time, and man, they're right there.
Yeah.
It's there. The service is incredible.
What's the cost of it?
$70 a ton.
Yeah. Now, at this point, there was quite a bit in the salt shed.
Yep. We're half full in the salt shed. Kind of because of the low price we had last year, I kind of banked up a little bit, knowing, thinking that it'd probably increase in price.
Yeah.
So it's not huge amount as far as dollars saved, but it's something.
Are you thinking, I mean, you're gonna fill right up here in the next few weeks to be ready, or?
Actually, with the service we have, we'll start using that, and then as the piles start to deplete, we'll have it drawn in.
As the need becomes more necessary, though, is that kind of to slow down their efficiency relative to getting up here to dump?
They have a lot of people trucking. A lot of contractors. And I got good rapport with Ken Black, which is the dispatcher for Corcella, and he is some happy that we're actually using the local.
Do you need that in the motion, or your decision?
No, that's what we're doing.
I don't remember ever doing that.
That's all I have right now.
Any questions of the Road Commissioner? All right. Warrants are floating and drifting. They're down there by Cass, if anybody wants to hold on. Greg, we have some discussion here this evening, I think, relative to warranty and stuff, so...
I was kind of brought into it later. I mean, it wasn't, so I'm only guessing, a little bit of talking to this, because they didn't go to the service manager, nor did they come to me, so I had to go back, and it's been a while since I sold you this whole package. And I'll sometimes think it was the greatest romance here, because it's taken me a little while to figure out who you guys are and what you're doing. It started out with supposedly not enough power, not enough traction in the tires, even though it was the truck I brought here, and the guys were all happy with it. So I went along with it. We paid for the tires, do whatever. We tried to take care of the customer. Meanwhile, we also got sold, but it has nothing to do with this deal. They honored everything we did. This is a good company that owns us. It's basically whatever we, whatever I said, we would stand behind it. With, I went back and make sure I sent you all the information when you purchased it. I have copies of it. And what you ended up buying was the TC in the EW4 and the TC, which doesn't mean a lot to you people, but I can explain it. So when you buy a truck, you got three components to it. You actually have the engine, or the drive line, and then you have the whole cab. So you basically have whatever, because we're a component truck, and you could've bought a Cummins, you could've bought a Detroit, but you bought a Western Star cab. So there's two different types of warranty, because it depends on who, what part you're buying. You guys actually bought the best warranty there was at the time, okay, which was an EW4, which is everything to do with Detroit engine, from the time the air goes into the cylinder, to the time it comes out, the tailpipe, all the after treatment, anything to do with that. So the only other warranty you would have left is called TC, which is total truck. Basically, it's the base warranty of everything that's made by Western Star, and both those warranties you bought for seven years on it. So the only thing that's left, and when you, I sent you the TC when you, really, when I was originally quoting you out, it basically tells you everything is covered, because TC was a little explained, you know, anywhere from air conditioning, starter, all that stuff. And it says the only thing, the only thing in the outside of, like, if you had a four-wheel drive, a transfer case would be exempt, and I can read some of the stuff, but it does say transmission, and that's not part of it. Well, Allison Transmission, you could buy whatever transmission you have. You buy that a separate warranty that comes from Allison. However, the way it works, they didn't have a seven-year warranty. You could've gotten a five. Right now, they were giving out a three-year warranty, and the way it works with all those vendors, two years is basic warranty, you got on everything. So the first two years, if you were to call our shop, they would pull it up and see the two years. If you're asking for the Allison warranty, for example, in this case, you looked at it and expired a month or so ago. Now you have to take the serial number for Allison for that transmission and look it up, and sure enough, you have another whole year of warranty left to it. That's being warranted by Allison. So the first two years, the whole truck's being warranted by Western Star, and then after the two years, it's broken down to Detroit, Allison, whatever warranty you bought. And that's what I sold you at the time. There was no Allison warranty. One is, I think, because you asked for seven years and they don't have it. They only have five years. I have a lot of towns that never buy the Allison warranty, because we've never had problems with it, to be honest with you. They've been almost bulletproof. But that's still, you know, in hindsight, we should all have known what we're selling. I should've done a better job explaining it. But that is what you bought at the time, was my mind, was for seven years. That's what I was selling to everybody that wanted a full warranty on it. But when you called the other day, and I wasn't there, and that's what she would've saw, hey, that, that two years ran out, towing ran out, virtual tech ran out, because if you look at all the bill of sales, those were only good for two. But in this case, if you go to Allison, and you actually, it doesn't run out to August of 2021. Okay? Can you buy any more warranty? Not, it's too late, you had one year to buy the Allison warranty. I should've sent you guys a note on that if you wanted it, because you could've extended it, but only for two more years. In other words, they don't sell, Allison doesn't sell anybody a seven-year warranty. And so I've had a lot of towns since it wasn't seven years, they just didn't buy the Allison warranty, is where it was. I said, I apologize for the community, because if I had a chance to talk to Cass, I would explain that upfront to what it is. Probably we should've talked after the year. I should've called you and said, hey, this is what, you have an opportunity, if you wanted to bump it up two more years.
We were under the assumption that with the seven-year, it covered the transmission, transfer case, everything like that, except for battery, and you know, you're nowhere.
Yeah. I did send it to you, and on it is small print, but it does say not excluded this transmission. Says on it. So I know, and I know you asked for the TC warranty ahead of time, so that's why I sent it to you. I pulled the file up, I did see it, but to be honest with you, yeah, if you gotta go through it, it's kind of small print, but it is there, and says transmission, tires, paint, bright work, and all that on it. And I tried to always give you the warranty ahead of time, that this is what you're buying, so this is what you know. I should've spent a little more time dwelling on that. But at the time, and still to this day, I sold to about 70 towns this year. I would say 90% bought what you people bought, maybe less than 10% bought any transmission warranty at all, because you're only getting two more years, you already got three years. And a lot of them, the problem with the transmission warranty, it covers the transmission, which never really breaks me, but it doesn't cover the computer. Well, under the TC warranty, the transmission cooler, which is more expensive than anything, is covered under the TC warranty. You know what I'm saying? So that's why we were always pushing the TC warranty, because even if you thought you bought the transmission warranty, but you didn't buy the TC, you burned the computer out, you don't have any warranty. It's not an easy thing to explain, to be honest with you. It's been, we've sold a lot of Western Stars, they've been a good truck, but it doesn't matter if it's a Freightliner, Western Star, Mac, an Allison's an Allison, that's all there is. So the only choice was either an 18-speed, you know, with that kind of power, which would be eaten, which there again, you can only buy a five-year warranty, and there's no warranty for a clutch, no warranty for the gears in it, on it. So basically, we've always pushed a little bit for Allison, there's a little bit more bulletproof on it, so, on it. They have come down a long ways. We've, in the last five years, and we're a huge dealership now, we cover all of New England. In my store, we went through it, we've done three Allison transmission in the last two years, and all three have been from an accident. You know, from somebody getting in an accident, and we had to cover on it. But it wasn't pressing for a $30,000 one, a reman's are only $5,000 today. That was the other thing. Go down, when you, when you actually talk to Allison about it, if you have a brand-new one on a warranty, they never put a brand-new one back, they only put a reman back. And some, some people don't like that idea, too. But to be honest with you, it's been a, it's been one of those things where we don't ever see Allison. My own town, I've been in Sluckman for 16 years, I told them, it's just not worth what they charge you for the Allison warranty, to be honest with you.
For that short time span?
For that short time span, you know. Yeah. And what happens was, when we're two years, we're thinking about it, then Allison went, went this vocational program with the $4,000, where it was two plus one, they call it. And I assume you got it with a Mac, too. I think, I assume they gave it to everybody. It's a two plus one. They started about four years ago, where you get two from whoever you're buying the truck from, and you get one more from Allison.
So I guess the big question that we all had, because we were getting conflicting information from when we called the office and you weren't there...
Yeah.
...was, we wanted to hear it straight from you, we, because what we had authorized was to buy the absolute best warranty that was available at the time.
Yeah, that's correct, at the time.
And that's, that's what I wanted to hear tonight, because we were getting told something different, and we wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page, because...
We had a meeting over this, because my service manager, you missed, so you originally talked to the girls there. They're only trained, I don't know, because it could've been a guy, too, to pull up what they see off the screen. When they pull up on the screen, when we first pull it up, it has a very important thing, which is a serial number to each one of your components, your transmission, your engine, your after treatment, anything that has a different serial number. They didn't, the minute they would've looked at there, they would've saw Allison, they automatically are trained, if they're doing warranty, to go over, because they always want a warranty at first. You see what I mean? They would've gone over and looked up Allison. Under the Allison program, it takes a couple of minutes, because you're moving the serial number over, you look it up, and now it says, this is what you have for coverage, because it might not even be the exact same that came with the first two years. It might be deduction, it might be something else. You see what I'm saying? It's the warranty that came from Allison. And what happens is, if you, yeah, if you call the warranty people, if you would come in and said, hey, my thing's broke, they wouldn't even call you, they would've told you it was under warranty, because then they, the people who are filing warranty, go to the computer and say, okay, let's look here, nope, let's look over here. They're trained to look at everything, but you were calling in for just information, that's what threw them off, because nothing is broke, nothing is down, so you're calling, what do I have? Girl, I can go look that up, this is what you have. And I think they were more concerned to show you that you were covered on there, everything but the training. And then that's what they were looking at down through.
I appreciate you coming here to clarify. I was kind of getting the hair up on people's necks, so to speak.
And I don't, I don't blame you at all. I really don't blame you at all. If I was sitting there, and when they first told me, I said, well, I bet you there's confusion over this. So when I went and saw my service manager, did you talk to them? No, I didn't. It was the girls out front.
Yeah.
I go, well, I think it, I'm, it's no sense to call and talk to them, they invited me to come to, I'll just go see them and explain to them. And it took me a minute to go back, because I've sold a lot of trucks since I've sold that one. But you bought it, I'm always nervous and scared about a town ordering a truck, does it come in the way that he thinks he ordered it? This was a whole different, you bought one off the lot. It happened to be the one you even tried. Drove it up the hill, you drove it around, that's the truck you bought. So I was a little more sure that you got what you wanted, because you actually test, not very often you get to test drive the truck you buy, which is pretty unique. So I thought this town, for being a new town for me, I thought, well, this would be a good town for me, you're close, we cover this area, this is our area. We do more plow trucks than anybody in all of New England, so, and Western Star is by far the predominant, and we were set up by even these owners to allow us to do rentals if we have to, we have to loan you a truck, we have to come and fix it here. And yeah, a couple of times you came, and you shouldn't have, we actually have a road service truck. But it's about a relationship, and a couple of times you said to me, well, I thought, you didn't talk to me, you told them, said, well, why, where's my loner? That comes from the sales department, you have to call sales. So if the truck is down, and I don't get a phone call, I don't know the truck's down. The drivers all work for me, the loners all come for me, so a lot of towns will call me, and hey, they want to have a recall on it, but we'll just send somebody to do it. Or that one has to come, I'll have a driver come get it, because the drivers work for me. If you're really in a bind, you need one in the summertime, I just need to know ahead of time. In the wintertime, I leave two set up with plows and wings on them, all ready to go, in case the day before something happens, I can skip out with the truck, give it to you, you go plowing, I'll go fix yours. The last few years, the dependability has been tremendous. Last year, I went the whole year, had two sitting there and never did use them, which is pretty rare, you know.
Is the best way is for us to have a contact number for you, as opposed to...
Got any questions at all? Most of towns do that, even when they're doing service. We've gone to, and I explain that to a lot of towns, all this warranty is worth nothing if you don't service by us once a year. I can tell you that right now. If they go down and said that, hey, he didn't do the front, well, a good example, we have real problems with front shackle pins. You can't grease them. They're a real pain. They're, they're gonna deny that every time, if they don't see somebody besides you greasing it. And it's a problem. We've now switched to rubber, we've done everything. It's, and it's a front end that everybody gets, whether you got a Mac or a Freightliner, the same front end. So we've gone to, like, once a year, let us service it. That's all we ask for, that we can go after warranty that, hey, because the first thing the warranty people want to claim is that you didn't change the filter on your after treatment, you didn't service your after treatment. It is complicated. One is once a year, there's one that's only once every three years. There's not much money, but if you miss it, they deny the whole warranty for your after treatment. Now, you paid for it, but if you, if they love to do, like anybody else, turn it down for lack of maintenance. So we, we offer a special undercoating to take care of any of the green pin connections of this corrosion of salt on it. So we constantly come pick the truck up, we service it, and bring it back, because we realize that most of towns in Vermont, they're short-staffed. You don't have a lot of people. For you to skip all the way down to Westminster with two guys, drop it off, come back and go back and get it, it's a real pain, because we're trying to service all the towns around here. We try to say if it's serviced, we'll coordinate with you. However, with our new service truck, and these people that bought us, the reason why they bought us was that Freightliner loved the idea of the service truck just being satellite, just like if you've got an excavator today, they can go out, well, we've had it with Detroit, with your product, where we can send them out, but what we're trying to do is more, if there's a recall, come here and actually service your truck right here, because the guy that's in this one truck never is allowed in the shop, he's only in that road service truck. So as we're doing West Rutland, or we're doing all, any of the towns around here, we sometimes call and say, it's summertime, if we can stop in and service your truck while you're right there, do your updates, do your recalls, it's gonna save you and us time, because then otherwise, I'll come get it. But yeah, if you've got any questions, you're better off, even for service for a while, while we figure it out, our relationship, let's put it that way, just call me so that we can, we can understand it. Nate, the service manager's, he's a young kid, but he is great. He really is one of the best guys I've ever dealt with.
Nate?
Nate.
Eric?
He is, he's in his shop, he, he runs the shop, but he's not the shop manager. He's not the, for example, he wouldn't know, he knows how to fix a truck better than anybody probably in the country, he's got more, more trained and more everything, but Nate's only one that knows about warranty, knows how to book the deal, knows what's, what's, what really, we have things what we call policy, where all of a sudden you're complaining about something, we, it's him and I that go to Western Star and complain, hey, the customer's complaining about this, you know, what can we do for him? It might be like, if you look up and the girl say you got no more paint warranty, yeah, you don't, but if you look at it and say that he didn't hit anything, and there's something to do with a blemish, that's us going for policy. We're, we're going after Western Star to say, hey, listen, this wasn't made right.
And that did happen.
Yeah.
Yep.
And we need to know ahead of time what we're challenged to, and that's Nate and I. Between the two of us, we're the ones, that I have to deal with policy money coming out of sales, or he deals with policy money coming out of service.
Do you have those numbers?
Yeah, or, okay, good.
And so either, always call either Nate or myself. Those are the two people. And we're in real bind, just, we're closing on Freightliner of New Hampshire tomorrow, so we'll now own a place in Lebanon, which is not that far also. The only reason is we'll end up now with a whole bunch of stores, so if there's parts that we know, and I'm talking to you, either him and I have authority to actually send somebody to go get a part at one of our other stores. Real important, if we're looking at time schedule and crunching. Otherwise, when you call our shop, we're no different than anybody else. Yeah, we're busy, we'll get you in tomorrow. But him and I are the ones that we deal with it, you're my customer, is he's trying to help on us and keep going, so.
We just had the spring shackles, they actually covered them.
Yeah.
So that, that is a...
You have been using us to do some service work and stuff, and that's why I said, it helps, and that's why we got it covered. And that was honestly a policy. We just went to them and said, hey, listen, because the first thing they said was lack of grease, the guy didn't, well, we're all having problems with them, so we don't...
Is there any way they're looking up that particular item, is it to improve it somehow?
So here's the catch-22. That was the late year, we went with heavier springs, so we wouldn't have it sagging. And the front shackle pins, when all of them started showing up, which I had never heard, sometimes I'm late, I'm two or three years of them down the road before they start to hear the complaint. If you go to Taper Leaf, it's a much better ride, more expensive, but it comes with a rubber bushing, so they can never deny, use no maintenance to it. You can't grease it, it's lifetime, you don't have to worry about it. But all the trucks came in this year, that's what I decided to do, after listening to everybody complain about it. And because you had 23,000-pound heavy-duty springs, you really didn't have to have the airbag to pick that side up. Now we went to Taper Leaf, it rides nicer, but it sags like crazy. So had to go and say to town, listen, this is what we're gonna do, we're gonna charge you a little more for these springs, but there's no maintenance to it, but we're also gonna have to charge you for an airbag on the right side to pick it back up again, because if you've got a wing, it just wants to lean that way. Rides nicer, handles nicer, less maintenance, but it's a little more money in the total picture, is what we're doing. And there again, that was me, myself and Nate working together, realizing, I didn't realize it was that bad. He said, man, we're running into this left and right. We called other dealers, yeah, we're running into the same problem. They either changed something, you've got to jack it up, it takes something that you think would take two minutes, and we were seeing that, we would actually take us, put a new pin in. The guy said, oh, we greased it twice, once a week, you're supposed to grease it, and then about the third week couldn't get recent, you know? But yeah, if anything we could do to help you, I, I said, I'd rather have a better relationship here, where you're real comfortable dealing with us, knowing when to call me, when to call Nate, when to call service. And don't be afraid to use our service truck, it's been a great help for them to come right here and service you.
As the fluid fell, that has to be done down there, right?
That has to be done at my shop. That's, that's, when I say my shop, there's a, if you've been there, a place, there's a service shop, and up on the hill is my sales shop. That is, comes out of my sales shop, so I coordinate that myself. But, and like I said, it won't cost you anything for me to transport it back and forth, and it costs about 325 bucks. Well worth it, because if we have to trace an intimate problem, it can run into where we have to call you and say, the light's not off, it's not on no more. What do you want us to do? Drive back here, and now it's back on again. That's the green pin connection from salt, and that's what this, originally, the Crown product was originally made to spray down your computers and all your electrical contacts, and what they found out, that if you could undercoat the whole truck with it, it would take care of all your, all your problems. It's, it's not like oil, where it's corrosive on the, on the hoses and electrical wires, but we see it all the time, when the guy that does it says, when you spray into those connections in there, you can see the water coming out of it. It just dries it right out. But we're, we're doing, I mean, he's busy, that's what he's doing full-time right now is Crown. We have, you know, he's lined up, I think today he did 15 school buses, you know, and but in the environment we're all in, and the cost of these vehicles is, it's, it's salt is, is an enemy, really is, you know? So what we do is, we actually pressure wash it like you wouldn't believe. People say they clean it, but we find, we find salt on top of places in the back where the channel is, where you didn't realize it was even there. He's just trained to know what it looks like. We clean it all up, then we undercoat it, and then we wash the outside of the cab again on it. So it looks, it's organic material, it looks like vegetable oil, really what it looks like.
You have to do it every year, do you?
Should, yes.
The whole thing?
Yeah. We do it, I did it on your truck originally, because we won't let a new truck out of the yard without...
We've done it.
Yeah.
We've done it once since.
Yeah. Yeah.
We do the grooves, wax all coating.
Yeah. This is this, what the Vanoss do, is sanctioned by Freightliner, Western Star, is what they push for. So if we got any problems with it, showing that we use the product that they're pushing us to sell does help, too, to be honest with you.
Cass, you have any more questions?
No. Thank you very much for coming, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Coach.
Thank you for the travel out.
Eyeball, eyeball always works.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Safe driving home. Matt?
Hi. The moral of the story is, when a woman calls you about your, your car warranty, you should pick it up and talk to her about it, then. Very confusing, you gotta talk to one guy and another guy. You can't talk to this one guy, not locally, huh? Uh, hazard mitigation plan is expiring in January. What do you want to do?
Re-up it.
I don't know, they asked me, the planning commission called me up the other day and said their, our plan is up in January, and in order to get ERAF stuff, whatever, we-
They really have no choice, do they?
We can't, there's no way to get it done. There's no way to, I thought we had a grant for it to get it done, but apparently we don't, and, uh, so they have some extra money at the planning commission, they said they can use for it or something, and just wanted to know what your thoughts were on it.
How much is it?
I don't have a clue.
Do we have anything that we have to change?
I don't think so.
I was going to say, I thought, we, I thought in the past, you've, you've just printed off what we had last year and re-
No, this is the hazard mitigation plan, not the local emergency operation plan. This is different. Yeah, I just print out the other one, and it basically changes a few things, and that's good to go, but this is the-
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
Hazers are in town, and they sit down and do a whole big freaking thing.
So, buckle your seat belts, because this is going to be flood zones all over again, and all that.
Mm-hmm. You guys, maybe you want to call around the planning commission yourself, and, and talk to them about it. You know, I actually just asked me to bring it up to you guys. Sure, why not?
But that's what this, that's what this is going to be. It's going to be all your flood zones again, it's going to be flood overlay, it's going to be the whole shooting match they're going to try and put in again.
For ERAF or something, or there's some kind of, uh, if you, if there's damage you want to get. If you don't have it, you get a, a small present if you do.
So, when we did this last time, would be before you came out, because it was probably, what, five years ago?
Yeah, oh, it's been at least five.
I think it's five or seven years.
Carol Gary had a big part to do.
And we, but we altered pieces of it, remember? We, we threw parts of it out.
Yes.
And said, we don't want anything to do with this. And they said, well, you may not get approved, and we threw it out anyway, and then it came back that we got approved with what we threw out.
That's why I'm saying, that's why we wanted, don't, let's not put the big bright light on it, let's just-
No, but-
And then throw it back to them, say, this is what we want to do.
Yeah.
Compared to lifetime, right?
When you're talking grants stuff, what are you talking financially?
Well, there was a grant available to do the, that costs money to do the, the hazard mitigation, it's not free, to do the hazard mitigation plan, I guess.
Yeah, we talking 1,500 or 5,000?
I don't know, the planning commission, the planning commission has money aside, they, the extra money aside that they could, they could fund it.
So, so the way this works, Cash, is they have, Matt can correct me if I'm wrong, but-
I don't know.
They have either pools of grants, or they have money that gets set aside for this. There's no great way of saying this. Then they pay their employees to write it. So, the, the pool of money-
Big circle.
Gets, it's a circular process. I, I, I mean, am I wrong?
It stays there.
Right? I mean, truthfully, truthfully, that's how it works. So, it, it, they assign somebody to it, and out of that money, that, you know, it, it kind of, it really, it really is.
Fortunately though, for our town, nothing really major has changed, as we originally authored this. So, I think the best way is for Katie to give those folks a call.
Stephanie.
And say that the, the board, we had a discussion briefly with this, and we, not assume, but we- Presume. Are, you know, we are considering to use the same, uh, plan that we have in effect right now.
I bet you can't, I bet they have a difference.
Oh, I'm sure.
I bet they changed the whole format, I bet you. I, I, I'm just, I don't know, but I'm just guessing.
On purpose. If you don't throw the ASAP card out there, you get a deuce.
So, I forwarded an email about this, um, back in September, and it looks like, um, it says the application will allow municipalities to contract out the work for updating their hazard mitigation plan. FEMA funding will cover 75% of the plan update costs. Total grant amount will be 10,150 for a plan update, including local match. The town will be required to cover the roughly 2,500 match financially, and or in kind. For a new plan, the total is 14,150, including around 3,500 in a local match.
And I guarantee you, it's a total rewrite.
I bet.
It's a total rewrite.
Guaranteed.
When's the deadline on this?
Well, ours expires in January, I believe, she said, and there's no way we can get it, a grant to do it the whole thing, we can get a grant sometime to do the whole thing by January, you can't get it done.
A match certification form is due by December 4th. But I can talk to her.
Yeah, and she said, she doesn't know whether they could get one done and sent into this, to the government in time to, we might get the grant, but then, but we missed the deadline for the, I don't know, yeah, talk to her.
Depends on how the election-
And just call me out of the blue about this thing.
When you're talking to her, make it clear that the town, you know, we really worked hard on this the last time, there's been no major changes in this town. And, you know, let's at least throw that out there.
Okay.
And then let them come back with another.
Hey, uh, uh, my prediction is, is it's a total rewrite. Uh, I mean, so, here's my thought process. If it's going to be a total rewrite, um, we as a board better be prepared, because we're going to have to, whatever comes, be prepared to go through with a fine tooth comb again, because I can tell you right now, I mean, there was the, 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 the concern that, that I have is, and I've been around for two of these cycles now, I think, I think. Um, because I think you were doing it right when I came on the board.
Yeah, I think so. This would be my second one.
And so, you know, when we do these, it seems to me like there's always some sort of a step that we're pushed on. Um, whether it be in the past, there's been the flood zones that none of us have wanted any part of, or if it's something else, um, we should probably just, again, be aware now that we're going to have to have our guard up for what we want. I mean, because, you know, how dare I say such a thing? This is the hazard mitigation plan for our town. Which means it falls under our jurisdiction.
Right.
Which, we have been elected by the townspeople to represent them when this comes down the pike.
And that's why the last time we did this, we had all the seats filled.
Correct.
In here.
But if you-
Including members of the planning commission.
But if you remember, my memory of that was the vast majority of people that came out to that were actually quite upset with what was being proposed.
Yes.
Which is why, which is why we listened, which is rightfully so, which I believe there, I, if my memory serves me right, these have to have at least one, if not two, public hearings, I think. I'm, I'm pretty sure there's at least one, if not two.
I think it's two, Robert.
Again, we listened to, I mean, the bulk of the people that came out, and we struck certain things out because of that. Um, and again, I, you know, I know that I'm a constant person who says it over and over and over again, not to give up our local control. That's, when, when these types of things come down our way, that's what I see, we have to really guard our local control. That's, that's just my stance, and-
Well, that's why the first, our first response to what you're suggesting is to have a call and say that we don't see a need for ma, any major changes in this process, and-
See where it goes.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, that's fine.
We just want to advance what has already been enacted, so that we don't have to have, as you were saying, all these hearings and everything else. And we'll wait for them to come back, and then we can count it out. It's so ridiculous anymore. Over the years, Bob, how many times they try to step on your toes?
Oh, every chance they get.
And then they send their people down here, and then their people are getting paid and we're-
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And it comes out, in most cases, the same as it's been. So, yeah. All right, anything else? Any other public comments? Must be the face mask.
Lady in the back though.
I have a question for, I have a question for a public member that is here. I have not been up. Cindy, has there been any progress in the cemetery? I haven't been up.
Not really. I know that they did, um, they got that dirt out.
Because they were supposed to trim, we authorized them to do some trim back.
Trees, yeah, they, I saw the other day, they hadn't been trimmed.
But the little cemetery, they worked in that, right?
The little cemetery got mowed.
But they took down some brush too.
I, I can step in on that. I met with our contractor, and went over around a little part of that cemetery, explained to him, and he, the way he talked, and he was going to do it immediately.
Yeah.
I haven't been up there.
Well, I, I stopped in to see the work that you guys did, and then I noticed that somebody was in that the little cemetery and had cut back a lot of brush.
They did cut it back.
Yeah.
One of the things that I would just note is that, um, and I know they started on that little, we authorized to start on that other side. Um, but what I was going to say is, on the eastern border, um, with McCollum's, of the old part of the cemetery, there is a couple stones now on that side that have had brush grown up around them, where you can't even see the stones anymore, so. And that was all stuff that we had, when I brought the school, back when Katie was probably a student, um, we, uh, we, we had trimmed a lot of that back, and I saw that most of that has come back out and kind of overtaken those stones again, so we don't want to let that get too far out of hand. So. Sorry, it was just a side question, because I hadn't been up.
The other day, I could still see a bunch of those trees that had started growing up.
Okay.
So, I know they didn't go back, I don't know how far you told them to go back, but I'm-
I guess my thought process is, if we have to authorize some more work to be done, let's do it, and let's, let's-
We need to get those small gates closed though, because I think that's why that stone got broke. I think the kids have been going in those little gates.
The little gates?
I mean, no animal knocked that off the top of those stones. And there's no trees there that fell on it, so it had to have been, in my estimation, been a little.
Sorry to interrupt.
So, the contractor hasn't done it yet, or?
I, I haven't, to be honest, I haven't stopped to see.
Do you mind, do you mind taking a swing by, like tomorrow or something?
And the other thing is, if Heidi was here, he might have submitted a bill for that.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, if Heidi got.
Heidi got an additional bill for that, because that was a separate from his contract. Original.
I've got my phone on me. Why don't you text her, Katie?
Um, but if they haven't, you want to authorize them to do the brush too? Is that what you're saying?
Well, let's, let's find out, because I didn't pay attention, I don't, I don't think it was in there tonight. I, when I looked through, I didn't see a bill in there tonight for them, so, I'm just curious. It could have been on the off week, when, you know, week ago or something, but-
Well, see, I don't know how much he's told them that they should do, so.
Well, we authorized, I forget how many hours.
I think 25.
25 hours, worth of work.
Forty, a thousand dollars worth.
It was basically a thousand dollars, but like I say-
His input, when I talked to him, he goes like, I says, well, we authorized 25 hours worth of work, he goes, wow, this is not going to take 25. I says, there's a lot of work here to be done, to not waste time, but use up that 25.
Okay.
Heidi said no.
Okay, so there's obviously still more work that, if he hasn't billed us yet, then, okay.
Um, Baucher Memorials did go in there and cleaned up.
Yes, they cleaned up the, the footings that had been dumped over the bank.
Good. So was it?
Yes, that, that was, my understanding is that was taken care of. I think Katie, in the end, contacted them and had a conversation with them, and they went right in within the next few days and cleaned it up, so. Um, I mean, I think publicly, we can say thank you to them for taking care of that and getting that solved, you know, that was, that was really good, and again, very prompt service to get it taken care of. And that was, uh, Baucher Memorials out of West Rollin'. So, very, very good job on their part.
All right, anything, uh, under new business? Town officers report. Katie, do you have anything?
Um, I don't know if you guys saw, um, Mike in your folder. Um, Allard Excavating wrote a note to the board, and it's in there. It's about how well the road crew had been working.
This is, yeah, I don't have it here. Oh, you're just testing me. Okay, I'll read this. Allard Excavating, uh, to the Town of Clarence Select Board Gentlemen. He uses that cautiously, but- Uh, this note is to inform the Select Board of the Town of Clarence that I, Daniel Allard Senior, give praise to the town work crew for their efforts on recent road work on a cordialine road project. I feel that Cash is doing a great job with getting Joe Parker, Joel Baker, and Tim Kennedy organizing, getting the things done. I see that they have gotten better and happier in doing the work. Very good, Cash.
Thank you.
And I would suggest that we give this letter, or a copy of it, to Cash, to post down there at the-
Absolutely.
All right?
That's all, I just want to be for the record, it's all teamwork.
Yeah. No, I saw it myself when I was down there, a couple times.
Um, the other thing is, we are still waiting on an estimate for road signs around, from the screen.
Yeah, um, that was a question.
Got calls too, like, where's the signs and-
I think maybe we should find another place to get an estimate from, because they're-
You can use a state sign shop.
Time to move on. Pardon me?
You use a state sign shop to do that stuff?
State sign shop.
Has a sho, a sign shop, AOT sign shop?
I didn't know nothing about it.
I'm basically get your polls from stuff, right? Everything else, right? They have, they have a, I, I'd contact Brad, see what he says.
I have a number for Menden, for polls, and I see, I got a call this week.
Yeah, maybe they know this, maybe the state AOT sign shop, maybe the prisoners can make them for you or something.
I was going to say, isn't that, don't they use, they do the justice system?
I think so.
They utilize work from, workers from the justice system to make them, I believe.
I don't know, just a thought, yeah.
If that doesn't-
Criminal, I think criminal justice still makes something.
They used to.
A hundred percent sure.
Make fire plates and stuff.
See where they want to.
Try to-
Oh, and then I had contacted Patrick Loakes about an update on the sewer system on East Blenheim Road. And he said, um, like, no complaints or reports have showed up. Um, so they're not pursuing it any further right now.
So, my understanding is based on at least one individual that I've heard from, is that dirt has been dumped next to it. And whenever anything bubbles up, they toss some dirt on top.
Yeah.
So, that's what I've been told.
Oh, wow. Yeah, so he said the owners have ceased operation of motorbikes and such over the system, and that appears to have helped quite a bit.
Yeah.
So.
Along with the dirt being tossed on it.
Individual is. But, um, yeah, actually, I had a conversation with that individual today, but, yeah, um, okay, I, I guess we just wait and see what happens, because winter's coming.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what's got me a little nervous, because winter's coming.
We got Patrick Loakes' number, and that's what the town, it's going to be our resource.
Yeah.
So, we can go with that. Anything else, Katie?
That's it.
Uh, Cash, do you have any concerns?
Yeah, there's one thing I missed, under the Highway Road Commissioner report, just to give the board an update, in the residents of town, the new Mack truck has been delivered to Sheldon Trucks.
Hmm, nice. Isn't it red?
We're, no.
Marine Corps green.
You can't have it for fire truck, that's why I didn't get it red.
That's right.
Actually, uh, Gary Barrows, Barrows called me today, he's the salesman that we dealt with, and left me a voicemail that he'd like to get the paperwork done up on it, and from there, go to Viking, which is a mile and a half up the road. Um, Viking can find out, is, of course, way behind, we're looking at, thought about Christmas time, and now we're looking at probably February.
Wow, good grief.
Because they're, they're having problems getting all their, the components, components of stuff out of Canada.
Yeah.
The dump bodies and-
Stuff coming across the border.
Yeah, okay.
That's all I have.
Is that talking to get undercoated by them, or?
We have, we actually haven't discussed that, but I learned a lot tonight, with this warranty thing.
I recommend talking to Burns, I mean, that's where we get our fire trucks undercoated, like, you're right, local in town, Burns underco, our flash fire truck, they're-
Was it used undercoated oil, or is it?
You can get almost, you can get almost anything from them.
Wax, undercoating, and then-
Reasonable?
Yeah, I forgot how much it was, I missed paying a thousand dollars or something, it's a big, big fire truck, you know, so, but, uh, yeah, I mean, I had my personal truck done.
How much?
$299.
I think my big, my, my three quarter ton.
Wax all, that was just just was oil.
Oh, this is wax all stuff, I mean, just, keep it in, keep it in town, that's all, you know, if you're going to get something done, you know, we'll try to keep it in town, so. See what Burns will do for you.
We'll call around. Yeah. Thinking about-
Anything else, Cash? That's all I have.
Bob, you have any?
A couple of things. Yeah. Last Wednesday night, we had the solid waste meeting. As usual, with the COVID, it was on the phone. Not in face to face. They got the implementation plan for the next five years, which I'm going to leave with Katie. Uh, it's pretty much the same, but of course the state, they're pushing this, uh, food waste thing.
Mm-hmm.
Working on that all the time, and, uh, they're getting pretty well squared away, I guess it is done now, except for paying for it, the wetland problem at the Gleason Road.
Well, that's still going on?
Oh, yes, that went on and on.
That was, one post got put in the wetlands, right?
Yeah, one post that was put in the wetland, and when it gets all done, if I am correct, and I believe I am, it's going to wind up costing the solid waste district about $70,000.
Ouch.
For one post.
Was that our girl involved with that?
That's what I was-
Your friend.
I think it's the same, same crew.
Yep, same crew. And the second thing, we kind of got a seatbelt getting the sheriff's department a little more active up in the village.
Mm-hmm.
Speeding is getting to be quite a problem.
I was thinking speed bumps, Bob. I was thinking putting a couple of speed bumps in Morton Avenue, it's slowing right now.
Well, it's not just Morton Avenue, you got the middle road, down Freesia, uh, even Route 7B to the village, yeah.
How do you, uh, get a hold of those signs that a lot of towns have? Did they get them on a grant, you know, like, do you see those signs that light up that says how fast you're going?
Yeah.
We, um-
I don't know, I, maybe it must be a grant form, I mean-
We looked into them a couple times, and-
Big bucks.
We looked into them a couple times, but I'm wondering if we should have.
I'll call the sheriff's department, see if they still got theirs.
Have Katie look into them again, cause is that, I wonder if that's something that we could get.
I talked to Sergeant Cross about it, about a month and a half, two months ago.
Yeah.
And he was gonna work on it and I.
They just put it up on Cole River Road. Up by.
The tra- the little trailer.
Yeah.
I'd like to see us actually get a couple of the permanent ones.
Yeah.
Yeah, permanent.
I might want one in Manchester tomorrow this week. I'll have to ask town manager down there if he, how he got them and if he got them on a grant and what the grant.
So I'd, I'd like to authorize Katie to, and encourage Katie to research some grants for those and see if we can do anything to get them.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be talking to my buddies in my, the other towns down south and see what they say, how they get them.
Rollin', West Rollin'.
We gotta be able to.
What in Manchester, if you're speeding, it says, it says naughty on it. When, 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 when you slow down, it says nice.
I could think of better terminology.
There's a, the one by the old tire warehouse on, on Seven and Rollin' is permanent now too, isn't it?
I, not sure.
Or is that, maybe that's a tra- I'll have to look.
Trailer.
Is that trailer? Been there for a month, probably.
But Wallingford's got one coming off one forty down into Wallingford.
Yes, they do.
That's a permanent. Permanent one.
So Sandy Switzer might know too.
Sandy might know. West Rollin's got one coming in from the west.
Yes, on one thirty-three too, don't they?
Yeah, I think you're right.
I think there's one on one thirty-three too.
Joel's Auto there.
Yeah.
I'm in Joel's.
Does anyone know what they're called?
Uh.
Speed signs, I don't know.
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's just the speed signs or whatever. They.
They're solar powered, aren't they? I think most of them.
They are. I think they're solar powered.
Yeah, mobiles.
Indicator thing.
Yeah.
That's what they are.
You can get mobile and permanent ones.
Yeah.
No, because it is the.
State police have them out too right now. Seen two different state police.
Especially since the paving.
Yeah.
And the motorcycles.
Yeah.
They scream up and down these roads, something unmerciful. Three of them. Oh, there's one in three. There's quite a number.
Speed bumps, we're fixing it all right now, so.
Well, at least look at it this way. Motorcycle's only got a limited time left before they're gonna beat you up for this year.
Right.
That's true.
But, uh.
But it's been, it's been all over, uh, Bob, but
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Car's going by my house and they're way late in the evening, way late.
Yep, some of mine.
Well, I was going, coming from Rollin', going Alphresia Road, I just went over to railroad tracks and this guy coming the other way had blue pickup and big tires on it and stuff. Man, I know, I bet he was doing seventy miles an hour.
Mm-hmm.
I, I kinda pull, you know, where you have that little pull off? I kinda pull in there. Now, when I start getting nervous about somebody speeding, you know it's a problem.
Oh, yeah.
That character was holding. I couldn't.
Should've gone CJ.
Huh?
CJ.
CJ, yeah.
You would've clocked him with a little, little stop watch.
I, I could see them. Anything else?
No, it used to be.
That's all I have for tonight.
All right. I did get a call tonight from Keith Wickham from Harold and, uh, you know, he asked if there was anything going on in town and stuff. And then, um, he said that because what the, uh, legislature did with the marijuana sales and stuff like this, um, is have we changed our mind about having marijuana sales in here? And I said, well, I can't speak for the other board members and if we have a meeting tonight and you wanna come, that's your prerogative. But as far as I'm concerned, no. When it just, you know, we dance that dance and so as one member, I told him, no, there's no way that I can see us allowing marijuana sales in town. Uh, he did say that in the law, it's a town by town thing. So if the town doesn't wanna do it. Yeah, if the town doesn't wanna do it, then we don't have to do it. Who the hell is the? My other phone was good. You should turn it off.
Yeah, my, my understanding is each individual town can make their own choice and whether they want the outlets for it or not.
So if you guys wanna give them your opinions, that's up to you guys.
If he calls.
Anything, Bob?
Um, the treasurer did pass on a short report. Um, of course, remind everybody taxes are due Saturday. Um, and, uh, so far, she said we're slightly ahead of collection this time last year. Um, with about, I think she said one point eight million to go.
Mm-hmm.
First, with paint now and Saturday, which I guess this time last year it was actually over two. So, so she said we are, we are a touch, a touch ahead.
Good.
Of normal. So she just wanted to pass that one. And I don't have anything.
Right.
Um, I just, uh, have been, um, very impressed with how the road crew has been. Um, with all the work you guys have done. So I echo that letter. Uh, you guys have been doing great, just really great.
Yep.
So, um, keep up the good work.
Pass it on to the crew.
Yeah, the speeding is out of control right now. I'll give them another call. And, um, I'll see if we have our, uh, our signs still around. We had one at one time. I don't know if it works or not, but.
Wonder, you know, if we contact the state police too, the individual.
They have two of them out right now, I think.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I'm, I'm suggesting possibly